Item number eight, we have a public hearing this evening to waive the first reading and adopt an ordinance amending and replacing Chapter 12.230 establishing an affordable housing program and affordable housing impact fees to Title 12 land use of the San Bruno Municipal Code and a resolution establishing affordable housing impact fees for residential and non-residential development projects. David?
Mr. Mayor and council members, the purpose of this agenda item is to consider a proposed affordable housing program and housing impact fees for both residential and non-residential new development projects here in the city of San Bruno. Since the release of the staff report, staff has received a number of comments and questions regarding the proposed program and fees, and those questions and comments pertain to such matters as would public schools and the community college district be exempt from this program? In other words, would they be exempt from a requirement to pay fees in this program? Another question has to do with would employees of public schools or the community college district be able to participate directly given the language in the ordinance in the affordable housing program? Another question has to do with in the ordinance, there is specificity about the phasing of affordable housing units. In other words, in the ordinance, it requires that a certain percentage of affordable housing units be constructed and ready for occupancy so as to assure that when there are market rate units and affordable units, that the affordable units are completed and ready for occupancy and that the market rate units aren't completed first and that the affordable units lag. There's another question having to do with in terms of if standard wages in terms of, let's say prevailing wage, would be required for the affordable housing projects, could there be or would there be a reduction in the fees? So these are some of the questions that have been posed to staff since the release of the staff report and the proposed ordinance and resolution. So what we're suggesting tonight, given the importance and detail in the affordable housing program that's before you and the impact fee schedule, that tonight you receive the staff report. Mark Sullivan, our long-range planning manager, will provide the overview of the staff report, go into a little more detail regarding these questions and comments raised, and that you ask questions of clarification of staff, that you open the public hearing, receive comments from the public regarding the program and the fee resolution, the ordinance and fee resolution, that you close the public hearing and then consider these issues, these comments that have been brought before you, as well as the detail of the program. Give us direction, give staff direction, and we'll take your direction, work on language, and bring that back to you at a subsequent meeting where we can incorporate your proposed language into the ordinance and into the fee resolution. So with that, I'd like to ask Mark to present the overview of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. So the purpose of my presentation is to provide a background and summary of the proposed affordable housing ordinance and the resolution that would establish affordable housing impact fees. The affordable housing ordinance would replace the city's existing below-market-rate housing ordinance, which I'll call the BMR ordinance, which I think you're all familiar with, with more effective tools to promote affordable housing in San Bruno. The resolution will establish the specific fee levels for different development types, and the resolution can be amended on an annual basis to update the fees based on a construction cost index which, such as the engineering news record. So a major reason for the proposed ordinance is to restore affordable housing requirements for rental projects which were invalidated by the California court decision, Palmer versus the City of Los Angeles. Although Palmer did not affect ownership housing for affordable requirements, the BMR ordinance essentially operates at half-strength because it doesn't apply to rental housing. The new ordinance would establish affordable housing impact fees in accordance with the Mitigation Fee Act, which governs the process for establishing impact fees. It requires the preparation of a nexus study to demonstrate the connection between new development and the increase in demand for affordable housing. Many jurisdictions in California are now using impact fees to address the growing affordable housing needs in their communities. Bay Area cities, including Daly City, Fremont, Mountain View, San Carlos, Sunnyvale, Menlo Park, Redwood City, and others have already implemented housing impact fees, and many other cities are currently in the process of either establishing new fees or updating their impact fee programs. San Bruno participated with 13 other jurisdictions in San Mateo County in the grand nexus study, which was described to you at an earlier meeting, and this process resulted in the preparation of a commercial linkage fee nexus study and a residential impact fee nexus study, which has been provided to you as well, and these were tailored to the local economic conditions and housing needs in San Bruno. The city council reviewed the nexus studies in October of 2015 and then in a study session in April of this year, and agreed that impact fees could be an important funding source to promote the development of affordable housing in San Bruno, and also directed staff to draft an ordinance to establish impact fees for residential and non-residential development projects. On August 16th of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the draft ordinance and the resolution. The Planning Commission recommended that the fees be set at a level high enough to encourage the construction of affordable units rather than paying fees, but not so high that the fees might discourage developer investment. The Planning Commission found the ordinance to be consistent with the housing element and adopted a resolution recommending that the city council approve the ordinance and impact fees. The nexus study calculated maximum justifiable fees for each development type, both residential and non-residential. That calculation assumes that 100% of the lower-income households would be accommodated in San Bruno, and it represents the maximum fees that could be legally charged to developers. Based on financial feasibility analysis in the nexus study and other policy considerations such as other permit fees that are imposed on projects and comparisons with nearby cities, staff recommends setting the fees at a lower level than the maximum. It should be noted that the BMR ordinance in lieu fees are roughly equivalent to the fees that are being proposed. The ordinance would apply to residential projects of five units or more, and staff recommends that the residential impact fee of, that a residential impact fee of $25 per square foot for ownership development projects and $20 per square foot for condominium and apartment development projects. For commercial linkage fees, staff recommends a reasonable fee of $5 per square foot for all commercial development types, including office, retail, and hotel. The recommended fee for the commercial uses is much lower than the maximum justifiable fee because the feasibility analysis showed that the maximum fees would have a negative impact on the financial feasibility for all prototypes and discourage development, while a fee of $5 per square foot has a modest impact on project feasibility. The draft ordinance outlines the impact fee requirements, alternatives to payment of the fees, and how the fees can be used. As mentioned earlier, a separate resolution will establish the specific fee amounts. So the ordinance would require for-sale projects to include 15% of affordable units in the residential project, and the payment of an impact fee would be allowed as an alternative, and this is similar to the requirements of the existing BMR ordinance. For residential and commercial projects, those projects would be required to pay the fees, that would be the first requirement. An alternative to the payment of fees would include onsite or offsite affordable housing construction or other alternatives that meet the city's affordable housing needs and goals. Mixed-use projects would be subject to both the residential and the commercial fees in proportion to the square footage for each use in the project. A separate affordable housing fund would be established. The funds must be spent to provide housing affordable to lower-income worker households. The funds must also meet annual reporting requirements, and the city has experience preparing these reports for certain water-capacity fees currently. To give you a sense of how the impact fees might work in a project, I'll use an example of a mixed-use project in the pre-application phase. This is a 60-unit rental project with 5,300 feet, square feet of retail space. The residential impact fee at $20 per square foot for a rental project would generate about $1.3 million in impact fees, and the commercial linkage fee portion at $5 per square foot would be about $26,500 for a total of about $1.33 million. Alternatively, the project could include nine units affordable to very low and low-income households. Although it's not possible to know the timing and the amount of development in the transit corridors plan, if you look at the build-out and, you know, the entire build-out of the transit corridors plan, assuming that build-out, the transit corridors plan could generate up to $40 million in affordable housing impact fees. As David mentioned, since the release of the staff report, staff has received comments in three areas, and I'm just going to summarize those right now. Barbara Christensen, representing the community college district, requested clarification of language in the ordinance regarding the exemption of development projects on property owned by the state of California and the community college district. This language is there, but it's not, we agree that it needs some clarification for the community college, and what staff is proposing is to add language stating that the exemption includes housing, so this would be the language, "housing units affordable to low and moderate-income households provided directly in support of a public educational institution," which would cover anything owned by public schools and, you know, affordable projects that are built for public schools. Elaine Breeze of Summer Hill Homes expressed concern about language that specifies the phasing requirements of the development of affordable housing units, which does not provide flexibility in special circumstances. A second concern relates to conflict of interest for the project owner and its officers and employees to purchase or rent affordable housing units. And these concerns stem from unique circumstances that are present in the proposed Skyline Residential Project, and that is a proposed project which will include, at this point, the proposal is for 28 units of faculty and staff apartments and a separate 40-unit single-family subdivision. The college district proposes to accommodate the affordable unit requirement for the single-family homes within the faculty housing. So in order to address the concerns, staff proposes allowing an alternative phasing plan for the affordable units that are in direct support of a public school with the approval of the city council. So it's really that approval of the city council which allows flexibility, that it would be presented in an affordable housing plan, what the phasing would be of the for-sale units and the affordable units, the market rate units and affordable units. In terms of the conflict of interest provision, the way it's written now, the project owner and its officers and employees would not be eligible to rent or purchase affordable units, but in the case of the Skyline College project, the purpose of the affordable units is to provide housing for faculty and staff. So we would suggest that that language be adjusted to state that, that the conflict of interest would not apply to a project owner, its officers, and employees for affordable housing provided directly in support of a public school. The third area of concern was from Bill NAC, representing labor groups, who requested an adjustment to the fee requirements to allow a 25% reduction in impact fees for projects that are constructed with union or prevailing wage labor. Staff has considered this request and proposes a different approach to address this issue. Because the city wishes to incentivize the construction of affordable housing units versus payment of fees, staff suggests a 25% reduction in the percentage of affordable housing units required and not the fees, to leave the fees the same, so the incentive would be to build units rather than pay fees. So those are the three areas of concern, and as David stated earlier, staff seeks city council comments and direction with respect to these areas, and that concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Anything for staff at this time? Ken?
Well, I guess we'll hear from our guests, but regarding the prevailing wage, so you pretty much said no advantage to any builders that provide prevailing wage. You just, I got lost.
No, so the idea is that the requirement for affordable units would be reduced by 25%. So in other words, yeah, so instead of, for example, right.
So you give them an advantage and in addition.
Instead of doing 15%, it would be closer to 11%.
Okay.
So that would be the benefit.
Okay. I have a question as far as, so it's all new construction?
Yes.
Any expansions? Any new square footage?
No, because in this case, there's a threshold of five units, construction of five.
What about commercial, what about linkage?
The linkage fees would apply to all commercial development.
Okay, so anything that's new?
Yes, yes.
All commercial development?
Yes.
Whether it's remodeled or renovated or restructured?
Well, expansion, expansion, expanding square footage.
So new square footage?
Yeah, new square footage.
And then which follows into, are you figuring all square footage? Because with the example you gave, a 60-unit, a 60-unit build with 5,000 square feet of retail, there's also amount of square footage that's garage.
Yeah, it doesn't include garage.
Okay, so it's just actual.
Does not include common area or garage.
Common area, habitable space, and, you know, and leasable space. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Do you have comments, Barbara, or Elaine, or before we open the public hearing, since your name was brought up?
Good evening, my name's Elaine Breeze, I'm with Summer Hill Homes, and we just appreciate staff looking into our questions and support the adjustments as recommended. Thank you.
Great, okay. All right, at this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to address the council on this matter? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from talking to the council about this.
Mr. Mayor? Through the chair, I thought maybe Barbara would get up and say some things. I just want to be clear, not on all the details of the proposed project, but please explain, you know, what, you know, who it's going to be available to and if those comments were okay.
So the first thing I want to say is that the rents that we charge at Canyada Vista and College Vista, which the rents here will be very similar, all meet the very low-income guidelines. And, you know, our program is for faculty and staff who are not, have not been homeowners in the past, to give them seven years, we're thinking about increasing that to nine years now because the cost of housing has gone up, seven years at below-market rent so that they can afford to buy a home. And we've had 45 people move out of our housing and buy homes in the area. So it's a retention, it's a, it's a, actually, it helps us recruit people from all over the country, and then also it's a retention program for us.
It's a great success story, I wish you, but all the units are going to be available to community college staff, faculty?
Has to be, yes.
Every single unit?
Every single unit, and that has to do with, we get a property tax exemption because it's on college land, but only if it's rented, only to our own employees.
Okay, and if, and I guess there's assurances that if, say, the community college district decides they want to get out of the real estate business, that there'll be conditions on?
We will do deed restricted apartments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we have 15% at both College Vista and Canyada Vista also, with the local cities.
No, I'm just, as long as there's a clause in there that says that if you get out of the business of providing housing for your faculty or staff, and so you want to open it up or sell off the property, then I guess there'll be some clause in there?
Well, there would be a deed restriction of 55 years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to cover every bit.
Okay. Anyone else under public comment?
Mr. Mayor, before you do close the public hearing, I might recommend that you keep the public hearing open. This item is likely to return for introduction at the next meeting owing to the fact that there may be some changes to the ordinance, and if any direction is given for changes, those would be pretty substantial changes, and so if you leave the public hearing open, the staff won't have to renotice it.
Okay, very good. David?
And through the mayor, if I could, the request of the community college district is to exempt their affordable housing project from our ordinance, and so as an exempt project, we would not then have a requirement, say, for deed restriction or a timeframe. So to be clear, the request is for a full exemption.
Okay.
Okay, could we clarify that, please? Somebody?
So, you know, there is an exemption in the ordinance right now that exempts United States government, the state of California, and its entities. We are not, public schools and colleges are not entities of the state, we're independent, and so that's why I asked for that exemption along with the others that you were giving to public agencies. What we propose to do is to do the affordable housing requirement for the single-family homes in the apartments, and those will be deed restricted, right? I mean, that's what I envisioned, yeah.
Barbara's question. So Barbara, if you could explain again, within your proposed 28 units, you're requesting that those units be exempt as units that the community college district would propose and control, correct? In other words, that the language of our ordinance be expanded to include public schools and community college district so that the exemption would apply to your project?
It would apply to our project, because what I was worried about is that if we were going to do the six units for the single-family homes and then have another 15% of 28, that that might be too many units for us to handle.
Right, so our understanding, if the city council would agree to expanding the language of the ordinance to include public schools and community college district, your proposed 28 units would be exempt. The market rate portion of your project, the 40 units that we've been discussing, the market rate portion would be applicable, would fall within the requirements of the proposed ordinance?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
And then the council member's question, I think, had to do with the fact that, let's say in the event, sometime in the future, that the community college district would decide to sell those units in the private marketplace, at that point, the exemption would be given up at that point?
Absolutely, yeah.
But would we hold them to an affordable, affordable rents?
I think in terms of the direction that we'd be looking for tonight, this is a very good example of a question raised, and in terms of an issue for us to further discuss internally and work with our city attorney and staff to address it. So this is a very good question. In the circumstance that the community college district would want to sell these units, then what? And what should we recommend to you in terms of language in the proposed ordinance? So that's something we'll put down to further research.
Okay, and while we're on the subject of Skyline College, what if Skyline College builds another school building? Would they be exempt from linkage fees?
Yes, the intent would be that if it's a, an educational facility, it would be exempt. That would be the intent.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Yeah, we're not going to close the public hearing. Anyone from the public? Okay. Marty?
Can you explain the second part of the exemption for the 40 residential units? Because that's not, that wasn't provided to us in our staff report.
Well, that would not be exempt, so, yeah, they're not exempt.
There was three things that we're talking about.
Yeah.
The comments were, so the first one was about the property being exempt, so we got through that one.
Right, right.
The two following ones are?
Yeah, are the conflict of interest and the prevailing wage.
Okay, so if you can just kind of summarize that conflict of interest again, and it's there because?
Okay, so the conflict of interest, this is a standard provision in this type of ordinance. It doesn't really envision a, you know, this type of housing, teacher housing. So just to be clear, it basically states that, that property owner or the officers or relatives are not, are not, do not have a conflict of interest to rent those units because they're going to, teachers are employees of the school district, so, yeah.
Okay, got it, got it, all right. Okay, that's number two. And the third one is for the 25% reduction because it's labor, labor wage or prevailing wage.
Right.
And that number was calculated by?
Well, it's been adopted by several other communities in the, on the peninsula, so I'm not sure where the number, but it's actually a number that's used by at least three jurisdictions that I know of. So it's just consistent with what other communities are.
Right, so my concern with that is this housing is for very low, low and moderate, and I'm guessing that labor is probably in the moderate middle, maybe even not moderate low, so although I'm encouraging for people to get paid a livable, workable wage, that benefit of, isn't going to help the people that are the poorest that need the housing the most. That's what my concern is.
Yeah, I guess the issue is, I mean, in this circumstance, what we're proposing is rather than incentivize paying the fee, we'd rather incentivize building the units, even if they're, you know, a few less.
My gut feeling to that is that the market is incentivizing the developer to build the units, so I am not sure about that as we come up to voting on it. I think that we really have to examine what we're trying to do here. Just one more thing, that getting very low, says right here, and low-income earners to afford to live here, we have to provide more housing. So, go ahead.
Through the mayor, if I could, add some comment. What we find is actually building the units costs the developer more money, costs the developer more money to include the units oftentimes than paying the fees. The developer will often choose to fee out rather than build and include the units. I think as a general policy... I think as a general policy, based on our study session and other work we've done with the council, the objective is to try to include and spread affordable housing units within developments here in the city of San Bruno. So as Mark indicated, if we would do what perhaps other communities are doing in the area by allowing for a reduction, a 25% reduction in fees, payment of fees, if there is construction with standard wages, we're further encouraging the payment of fees, feing out, as opposed to including and building units, affordable units to the income groups you're mentioning within our community. Our staff is of a different opinion. If anything, we think that if there's going to be a reduction, an incentive provided for standard wages, it should be in the direction of encouraging the construction of affordable housing units blended and spread within our community. So as Mark indicated, our suggestion to the council, if you're interested in trying to encourage with affordable housing projects standard wages, prevailing wages, we would encourage you to consider then a reduction in terms of the number or percentage of inclusionary units to head the development community in that direction to actually get constructed affordable units blended and scattered within our community. So that's what we're suggesting to you this evening. And we're looking for your direction on this and the other issues raised or anything else you see. It's a fairly detailed program and fee schedule. And then return, as we indicated earlier, back to you with proposed language to address your direction. Thank you.
Okay, so if...
Ken?
Are you clear? Because I just want to be clear on, so if a non-union developer wanted to come in and they wanted to fee out, there'll be no affordable units. So the onus is on the union builder who will come in and say, well, it's easy, I don't have to build as many as everyone else, so maybe I will provide some affordable units and then maybe get a reduction on, you know, on the impact fees too, if I'm providing, you know, affordable housing. Because you don't pay impact fees and provide affordable housing. It's either or.
It could be a blend...
A little bit of a...
It could be, it could be.
Yeah.
But the objective here is that if an affordable housing project is proposed and we're trying to encourage higher wages, because it's a combination of the higher wages that allows people to afford units, as well as programs like this where we collect fees or require units to be included, it's that combination of raising wages and providing subsidies, those combinations, two measures that we can work with to get more affordable housing in our community. So the objective here is that if we provide some reduction in the requirement to get standard wages, increased wages, we're giving people presumably more money to afford more housing in our community and at the same time encouraging the actual construction, inclusionary units within our community. So that's the intent of our recommendation. And again, based on your comments, we can work with the language. Bring that back to you for your further review.
Rico?
Just wanted, Mr. Sullivan, when we're talking about the colleges and the schools, you said teachers as far as that. I'm sure we're talking about all faculty, all employees. You were teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just want to clarify. That's what's my understanding. I want to make sure I was still on the same page.
Yes, faculty and staff is what it says.
Okay, thank you. So and when it comes to the prevailing wage, I'd like to see what the other neighboring cities you said and what their percentage is, and if there is anything outside of that that maybe would be of interest for me to review as well.
Okay, we can bring that back to you, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Irene?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I think on the three or four or five items, you're on track. So I think you should leave the public hearing open and bring back the recommendations with the little firmer. Mark, do you have something?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. All right. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.